Get started here if you all stand please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Right into it. If everybody had a chance to review the minutes, I'll look for a motion to approve. I'll make your motion. Go ahead. I'm looking for a second. Paul, thank you, Karen. Any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Let's jump right into resolutions of the day. We've got the first one, which is EP1, Resolution to amend the agricultural district land boundaries by permitting additional areas of inclusion pursuant to agriculture markets laws. I believe this is the same resolution that we do every year. Now, the names do change each year depending on who has been recommended to us by the board, the advisory board. So I think everyone's hopefully had enough time to look that over. We look for a motion for discussion.
Motion, Paul, make it.
Thank you, Morris. So I have a second. Second. And thank you. All right, let's go into discussions. Does anybody have any discussion on the list that we have here? Great.
Curly question. This would give a 10-year declining scale on the tax rate, correct?
No.
The way down?
This is only to have property identified as being eligible to be considered as agricultural and within the district. To get the tax benefit, you have to go through a separate process, which is managed by soil and water district. And then you have to be able to verify that you have a minimum of $10,000 annual agricultural activity.
Strictly agricultural.
It could be woodlots, it could be grapes, it could be chickens, whatever, as long as you can show that generated a minimum of $10,000 to a junk fund.
Right.
I can give you better information if this department, his office manages it.
So what is the advantage of going into this district?
As far as the district, I'll let Paul speak on that. I mean, that's more of a right to farm, but the tax exemption is a different program that we work in conjunction, obviously, with the assessors. So we have part of the program that we take care of at our office, which if you do have someone that wants it, they just have to give us a call. We just need some certain information to do that. But ultimately, it's a tax exemption for certain parts of their land or all of it, depending upon their status as an agricultural producer.
So it is a tax exemption.
Not this.
No, not this.
So the two programs have absolutely nothing in common. You can be in one and not be in the other. So the ag district, which is the program that comes out of cooperative extension, is New York State is what's called a right-to-farm state. So if you are an agricultural producer in New York State, you have the right to certain privileges that you can do that can't be revoked by a community. In order to participate in that, you have to be in the ag district. So your land has to be declared as an agricultural entity. What it really does, when it all boils down to it, what it really does is being in the ag district prevents you from being harassed by nuisance claims. So the only time a farmer can work his land is 11 o'clock at night because he's been doing other things all day. Many communities in Swinburne County have noise ordinance. So this farmer would not be able to go out and do that because he would be in violation of the noise ordinance. But if he's in the ag district, he's permitted to do anything that is considered to be mainstream agriculture without any claim from the municipality that what he's doing is wrong. So if 11 o'clock at night is the only time he can till that ground, he's perfectly within his right to do so, and the code enforcement officer really has nothing to say about it. It's a protection for agriculture producers who are doing mainstream agriculture to be able to do their job and accomplish what they need to accomplish. That's all it does.
So the agricultural building's tax credit is totally separate?
Yes.
Can one file for an agricultural tax credit and a pilot at the same time? I'm just curious.
Kevin, do you know, or Gary, do either of you?
I don't think we've ever dealt with anything like that.
I don't think it would work because one of them is in lieu of the taxes. I would think that the...
A pilot would supersede the...
I would think so.
Reduce taxes.
May make sense to get the answer for you for sure, but once you've got a pilot that really are no longer taxed, I don't know that, Joe, have you dealt with?
I have. You really have to have some investment in job creation in order to even be considered for the pilot, and it's got to be pretty substantial to make it worthwhile. It's a lot of time and money just to make the application. So unless somebody was making a huge change to their farm, maybe they had a dairy farm in there, were going to add a brand-new computerized milk compiler and another 500 cows or something. I could see them perhaps approaching that as a business venture, but most farmers aren't making the kind of investment or creating the jobs that would qualify them to get a pilot.
Well, this is nice. They've done a good job. It's a mixed-use thing, kind of, so venue and...
Yeah, so let's bring that up. As I said, I think we need to talk about it so we can get it in the minutes because this is going to be a first for Swinburne County. So Lusler Shaq called me with some concerns about one of the properties that has been approved by the Farm Land Protection Board to go into the ag district, and that is Curtis Manor. So Curtis Manor is, as she just said, a mixed-use type of a property. I did, in fact, go and do a site visit myself just to make sure. He does, he's actually on the cutting edge. He's got what they call high-density apple trees planted over there. He's got about 110 trees in, all growing on a high-density method, which really is state-of-the-art for today. He's got a bunch of blueberry bushes over there. He also has started on the side, which I didn't realize the last time I was there. He's started a small group of vines. I'm assuming he's going to trellis those. So he does have the agricultural part of being in the ag district. What we don't know is what do we do about other issues? For instance, suppose he has, and I don't know if this is going to happen, so please don't be offended, I'm just throwing ideas out. What happens if he has a party over there that turns out to be incredibly rowdy at 3:00 in the morning, and the neighbors are complaining? All right? So if he's in the ag district, really and truly, the code enforcement officer doesn't have much to say about that.
Well, I think they could because they have a hard time justifying that the party was agriculturally related.
Okay.
So there'd be some leeway.
Okay.
If he had a bunch of people out picking grapes in the middle of the night and making noise, then maybe your sitting would be appropriate.
Okay, all right.
One of the big issues, I think, is the spraying. The spray that you have to take care of the crop.
Yeah.
And the amount of time you have to spray and all that stuff. You don't have to, as a farmer, you don't have a special permit to, like somebody that wasn't a farmer.
Correct.
Spray for insects, or we can draw.
Correct. So one of the things that I did after I spoke with you was I called Ag Markets and asked for some guidance. They have not called me back. But one of the things that I have done a little research on myself is I think this kind of equates to the same thing as some of the wine-making operations that are in the Finger Lakes. You know, I mean, these are agricultural entities that then have restaurants attached to them or wine tasting parlors attached to them. Those are all in the ag district. All of those entities in the Finger Lakes are all in the ag district. So I wanted to make sure that we brought this up just so that there's a conversation. I mean, if you've never done this before in Swinburne County, this will be the first. I don't know what kind of precedent this is going to set for the future, but I wanted to make sure that we at least talked about it and everybody was aware of it. And I thank you for calling.
It's a magnificent property.
It's gorgeous.
I had my horse there as a child.
Yeah, it's absolutely gorgeous.
It's gorgeous.
So I drove all around.
There is the middle school right there.
Yeah.
Sprays concerning, but...
Where is this?
This is on West Fifth Street Road. It was originally known as Curtis Manor, which was a huge dairy owned by Kingsford, one of many by Kingsford. And then you go down the drive, and the huge, the main huge dairy barn is...
It's beautiful. Absolutely beautiful.
It's redwood. The hayloft is redwood. The horse barn unfortunately fell in. That was unbelievable. It had hardwood oat shoots and everything upstairs. I mean, they had a blacksmith shop. It was unbelievable. It's a magnificent property. Part of that barn is built into the side of the hill so you could access one law, both laws, you could drive right into, probably put, I don't know, 300,000 nails up on, is that big?
So he's turned it into like the wedding venue banquet hall and adding other agricultural aspects. This is the case where perhaps the development of the facilities could have been under a pilot. I don't know if it was or not.
It's not, nor has that property applied.
Right. So they, based on that investment in the jobs created from it, they could have had a pilot. And I don't know if they would even need to ask for the ag exemptions while a pilot was in place.
All right, Paul, go ahead, sir.
There's not a minimal acreage on that ag district, is there?
There is. I don't know off the top of my head that it's very small. I mean, I think it's like a couple acres. I don't think it's a lot.
I can tell you firsthand the experience I had with this. We had a neighbor move in and started landscaping, but it was small. And he's grown, and he's grown. And the person who sold him that property sold building lots off. Everything was fine except for we got a lady that decided that she wanted to live on cul-de-sac in 132. So she went to the town for noise ordinance, and because I was in an ag district, they couldn't do anything to me. So he came to me, I saw him at the town board, and I said to him, I said, I'm going to dig what you got. He said, I got 52. I said, perfect. I said, you need to apply for an ag district. She was complaining because they were running the skitters and the stuff in it. And he basically had expanded the business. Her comment was to the town Hastings was between houses, cows, and the landscape and business. We don't have any peace and quiet in town on this road. And it's like, okay, so if you want to live on cul-de-sac, why are we trying to figure out how to do it?
Right.
So that's what that law does to protect.
Yeah.
And it took them a while to do it. And I was old, and I don't know why I haven't looked into it enough. When they had the spurning van on, if we're burning our fertilizer bags out in the fields or not, not a huge building or a brush fire, but if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing in agriculture, then they can't, the DUC can't even touch this for them. But you got to be in an ag district.
Richard, you want to sit on this?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, just one thing I want to point out. Paul is absolutely correct because Paul and I worked on this issue over in one of my towns.
Oh, yes. I forgot that one.
Oh.
I forgot that one. You're right, yeah.
The thing is, is that it was an old farm, some of it subdivided, no question about it. Went back, the original farm went back into the 1800s sometime. And the thing is, she called me a million times. But in this case, she was right because the town was coming down on her with all these restrictions and everything, and neighbors were a little bit, you know, cul-de-sac, let me put that word.
Subdivided.
And we did it, it was straight dealt, get her into where she belonged on this original farm piece into the ag district. And I'd be showing her like two and a half acres. Doesn't have to be a lot of acreage, but that's not the intent of the law. The intent of it is to protect these people. And that made all the problems go away.
By far, the biggest number of phone calls that we get on the ag district, and I'm not trying to be offensive in any way, is, you know, the family that comes up from Syracuse on a Sunday for a drive, and they find this piece of property, and it is exactly what they were looking for. You know, and so they go ahead and they put in, you know, a beautiful home, not realizing that they're on the same street that somebody's going to be going back and forth with the honey wagon, or somebody's got cows, or, you know. And then they start calling, and, you know, this has got to stop. And really and truly, I mean, that operation was there before you were, you know? We had one, I'll tell you this, just because you should know, but we had a situation where I received a phone call from somebody who's retired from the health department now. This is about 10 years ago. He called me up and he sat up. We have a situation where a family has built a home, and they're complaining about mice and rodents and problems in agriculture that it's affecting their property. And, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, those are all part and parcel to farming. I mean, if you have a corn crib, you're going to have mice and rats. I mean, there's no other way to say it. And you need to keep them under control, but you're not going to get rid of them. And so he called me, and nice guy, I've worked with him for years, and he said, I went to see the farmer, and the farmer came out with his fault gauge and told me that if I didn't get off his property, he was going to shoot me. And so...
Not a protected activity.
And so, you know, I had a conversation with him, and I said to him, you know, I'm just telling you, I know this guy personally, he has nothing to lose, he's been a very sick man, he's dying of cancer, he will shoot you. You know, I mean, if you go back on his property, he will shoot you. But that was a classic case of somebody who had moved in the area, you know, didn't understand that they were right down the street from agriculture, and that's what was going to happen, whether you like it or not. It's just part of agriculture. So, but that's what the ag district is supposed to do. It's supposed to prevent that nuisance.
That's great. Murray, do you have any other questions on that? Thank you, that was a great discussion again. Very informative. So appreciate that. Okay, is there any other...
Just as a side note, not everybody who applies for this gets approved. There's a pretty rigorous discussion at Farm Land Protection Board about the activities, about the reason for the request potentially. I can recall one recently, the guy had a junkyard, and he wanted to be included in the ag district so people weren't telling him about his junk. And to do that, he put a couple of chickens in the backyard and a goat and applied to be in the ag district because he had chickens and a goat. And they said, no, it doesn't qualify. So not everybody, it's not automatic.
That's good. Thank you. No further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? All right, great, thanks, folks. Move on to EP2. I'll look for a motion to discuss. Motion. Thank you, second, Paul. All right, Dave, you want to chat about this one real quick or just for you guys?
Yep. This is an application for new funds from permanent transportation. It includes things like some new bus shelters, routes that they're proposing to provide more access in the Plaski area. It includes money for the mobility manager for a year, and then six new buses as well.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Call for vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Thanks. Would you agree? Resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Community Development for Snowville Trail Maintenance Grant, Paul, Dave?
Yep. So snowmobile funds come in two segments, 70%, which is usually supposed to be upfront, and then 30% once everything's been completed, and then the clubs have made their reports, or in this case, the county has made their reports. So this is the 70% portion that, you know, in a normal year, we would have had in December. But there's been a lot of transition at the parks office that oversees the program, and the new director has been very vigilant about checking everything and understanding the program. So got to pay a little bit, culture really waiting for this money, you know? Annual thing, I would do.
Great. All right, I'll look for a motion. No? Second? Paul, thank you. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? Thank you. We'll move on to our final resolution, number four. Resolution authorizing budgetary mod for Department of Community Development for stowaway cleanup funds.
Yeah, this is again something we do every year. The permanent transportation, at the conclusion of an annual operating year, takes a look back at actual ridership and then makes adjustments based on the formula that they have. So they give you money in anticipation of what you're going to do based on previous years, and then they do this little catch-up grant that we had to even it out.
This is the catch-up piece of it?
Yes.
Dave, is this, do you, can you speak to our ridership compared to previous years, or is that something, I know we had some concern about that in the past, I know our transportation committee has been actively looking into that, so assuming with this cleanup, we actually have some numbers?
I can't tell you what the exact numbers are, but if there wasn't an increase over the anticipated ridership, this number would be a lot lower. This is also enhanced a little bit because last year, they changed their formula. So they're reimbursing at a higher rate slightly than they did in the past.
Okay, that's great. And I believe that at the transportation meeting, we discussed these things. So anybody who'd be interested in that, have that information available. Thank you, Dave. Okay, do you have a motion? Look for a motion. No? Thank you, second. Paul? Any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? All right, thank you. All right, moving on then, we're going to jump right to our committee review. We got the Tourism Advisory Council appointments. Okay, Alvin had a chance to look. Do we need a motion for this, or we just...
Well, the motion would be to recommend to the chairman that he proceed with the nomination of these folks.
Can I have that motion?
Let me think.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do I have a second? Morris, thank you. All right, is there any discussion about the list? Dave, are you knowledgeable about this group? I believe the majority of these folks are folks we've had on here in the past.
Yeah, so Dave Raff is a former legislator, also retired state trooper. He's been on forever. He's been chairman for several years, participating as a volunteer for a lot of our shows previously, but not so much recently. Dick Joss, retired firefighter, does a lot with the Great Bear area, also coordinates a lot of kayak and canoe activities around. Nancy Weber's been on for quite a while. She's real good about keeping us informed about agricultural-related tourism opportunities. Fred Mills owns a bike shop, and biking is becoming a bigger, it's been a bigger sport, especially with these new fat tire bikes now. In fact, just recently, they had a vet that went on a forest that was, was a dog sled event, but what people didn't anticipate seeing was now they have dogs that pull these fat tire bikes like they were sled. Pretty interesting, so bikes are making a big transition.
Morris, go ahead.
I've been a member of this, my term isn't up.
I think you are, and, yeah, your term isn't up because you'd be listed as an ex officio. And so I believe you're still, your term is still active.
I don't know, I'm just asking for details.
What do you say?
These are all new people, of course, not all...
These are either, yeah, these are all either new, these are all term expired, is my understanding. These are new or reappointed folks. So if your term is not expired, you would not be...
Well, I didn't, that's why I'm double-checking.
Yeah. Thanks, Dave.
So Jim Hackus, he's been vice chair, counselor in the Village of Mexico, very involved. Dan Krupke. We try to get people from geographically represented all areas of the county, including regular citizens, business owners, and business groups. So we do see people here representing communities like, or organizations like the Tuckville Commission or Chambers of Commerce, and then tourism organizations. Let's see, Eva is chair of the Swinburne City Committee. Lyndon Middleton's been on for a long time, Swinburne County Snowmobile Association. Jim Lynch is new, but he is the village administrator in Phoenix, so we're excited about getting somebody from, a new person from Phoenix. The person we had in the past is no longer around, and a lot of things happened in and around that block on the river there. A lot of activity and festivals there, so we're happy to keep Phoenix involved. Chuck Parker has been involved for a long time. Andy Bliss has been on a couple of years. He does a lot of volunteer work for us when we have writers and things come in. Andy's a guy that we rely on a lot to take them out, give them a good experience so they can write about it. Sometimes he writes for us as well. And then Legislative Chesbro, we're looking forward to her participation because she's so informative.
Perfect. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have some good discussion. Is there any questions, anything else? If not, for vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Any votes?
Should I abstain?
Yes, I believe so. Morris is okay to vote because the name is not in this slate.
Yes.
Perfect. Wonderful. All right, I guess we jump right to budget, Dave, do you want?
I'll just pass these around. This is an update on the economic impact of tourism. So just some fun facts for you. People ever ask you about tourism in Swinburne County, you've tried to bullet it here. So you have some general idea about this, jobs and taxes and expenditures. Happy to answer any questions about it. We continue to be the highest county in New York State with respect to non-resident fishing licenses. Sell more than any other county in New York. We sell more than all of the other Lake Ontario counties combined, specifically non-residents. So people who are living in New York, and those people come from farther away, they stay longer, it's time to move. So it's a title that we like to have. And then San River Corridor, you can see, is a huge contributor as well. More than 60% of all the tributary activity, all of the Lake Ontario tributaries, happen on San River.
Dave, the Super Dirt Week, do we look forward to having that for quite a while, or are they still kind of here to here?
I think the last extension was an additional three years.
Okay.
I don't know their practice if they go beyond three when they're soft in communities, but they're very happy here. They continue to make investments in concert with Speedway owners. They've added a lot of infrastructure to the property. They've added a lot of campsites. Last year, I think they had 400 campsites that were sold out like two months before the event. And so they scrambled to add more, and they're looking for opportunities to continue to make improvements. For example, right now, they have to run fire hoses from adjoining neighborhoods to cover the property during that event. So one thing that they've been talking to me about is how they buy money to actually run a line and put some hydrants on the property so they don't have to have hoses from all over the place. So they're making investments that make me believe they have an interest in staying around for a while.
Good. That's a great thing. It started as temporary, and you have them up here, it's great.
Morris, go ahead.
I'd like to bring up one point that I see at times. There's, we have a county airport, and there's charter flights coming into that airport that also will service the tourism industry. And a big plus has come on board with the fact that a lot of charter aircraft like to be in-house, so to speak, in the hangar. And we now have at our airport a very nice large hangar to accommodate a lot of these jets or aircraft that come here. So I just bring that point up, and maybe we need to be, let it be known more that this is available. Overnight, people, most everybody's got something like that, likes to have it inside, not just in the winter, but even in the summer.
That's a great point. Dave, have you had the opportunity to share that information with folks, or is there an area where maybe we could spread that information out a little more?
Yeah, we worked pretty well with Brandon at the airport to help him do his publicity. Right now, there's still some infrastructure issues at the airport, so he's not ready to like go full blast. We'll be starting Thursday. We opened the Big Sport Sewer Line. If everything comes in to our satisfaction, we're going to be asking, we have asked for a special meeting prior to next Thursday's legislative meeting to award that contract, and we'll get those people started right away. So... So, um, yeah, Brandon is doing a fantastic job there and he and I work together pretty closely.
That's great. Any other questions today? Did you do anything else today?
Thank you.
Joe, go ahead.
I just wanted to give everybody an update on where the Marine Sanctuary is at this point. If you didn't see the newspapers, uh, the National Oceanic and Oceanic Administration has, uh, formed the Required Advisory Council to the, uh, Sack Word, uh, representing stakeholder groups from throughout the region, four counties in the region. Uh, you'll see some familiar names and common names for people you don't know. But, uh, it's a fifteen-member advisory council representing certain stakeholder groups. Each member, they also appoint an alternate, and both the member and the alternate for that member are fully engaged. They go to every meeting. Uh, the member can vote, the alternate can vote if the number is accurate. Uh, so these are the, uh, coming back, uh, are the, uh, stakeholder areas or, or, uh, factors that are represented. Had a good geographic representation of people who came forward and applied for these positions. These are unpaid voluntary. There is also a, uh, Government Advisory Council comprised of the six governments that submitted the proposals originally. Uh, us, Jefferson Lane, Keogah, City of Australia, and the state of New York. Uh, I'm the, uh, member of that and Dave is an alternate. Uh, so this was a critical step forward with the advisory council. Now Noah can begin, uh, writing the, the federal register regulations and the management plan for this, for this sanctuary. And these folks have input into it from their, from their background perspectives. It's a nice way Noah does this. That way the local community and the stakeholder groups take ownership of this thing so that it can continue for decades rather than it being reliant on founding of these people. So, uh, this makeup may change if a designation occurs. So this is an advisory council that's in place while designation is in process.
That's great.
Noah, thanks. Our, our gentleman here, he's worked real hard, two years still has, to get this here. And of course, he goes underwater and does a few things himself. But, uh, congratulations and thank you very much for doing what you're doing, Noah, and so, I appreciate it. Well, actually, two years, this has been a project that you've wanted for a long time, and we all want it.
Very long time. I can tell you when he first became the administrator in one of my very first meeting with him. I talked about, you know, he asked me about my goals. I said, what about yours? He said, well, have you ever heard of Marine Sanctuaries? Very first meeting I had with him as administrator.
That's nineteen seventy-eight, I believe. No, that is great. And actually, I, I kind of like to give you a wrap. Very, very exciting and we'd be absolutely huge for this area and we do appreciate it.
Let's just hope that happens.
It has to. You, you've already promised.
Well, that's it. I just wanted you to know who the folks were on that.
Great, thank you.
Well, you know, speaking of, if that, or you hope it happens, what is the timeline on it?
These usually take a couple of years to go through designation.
So we've done, you know, the process a little while.
Right. We, uh, we submitted the nomination of, I think, in the beginning of two thousand seventeen. And, uh, or at the end of two thousand sixteen, it was accepted. Two thousand seventeen was a little bit of a delay, uh, on processing these. Uh, they had to finish, um, designation of another one or two sanctuaries. And they chose, of the five, the five that were in the, in the hopper, they chose us to do first as the last. So, but it is a couple of years' process. It's, uh, they gotta come up with an entire management plan, uh, do the environmental analysis, the secret process. The, um, getting, they, they will come back into the communities after the management plan is written, uh, and published so that they can get more, even more public input as to what they like or don't like about, um, what the management plan is. Change it again, and it goes through the adoption process. So it's, it's, it's pretty, um, intensive through what they go through to establish this.
Thank you. You know that, um, Congressman Cacko has, uh, pending, uh, visit to the Marine Museum sometime in the very near future. We're not sure that, uh, it may or may not be related to this.
The council's gonna meet for the first time, I think, on March eighteenth at the Lake Ontario, uh, Catholic Center here. So it'll be the first time they come together after organizational meeting, and that's a public meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, nothing else then? Dave? Joe? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
If you didn't see the announcement yesterday, the, uh, Congressman, President Cacko, announced that they are introducing legislation that would allow businesses, governments, and individuals to file suit against the International Joint Commission and actually get results. And anybody can file suit now, but the IGC, uh, as an entity is immune, so they're trying to remove that immunity. Swigway County was on record as early as two thousand six, opposed to new lake regulations because we saw these things coming. And, um, it was, it was stated in the plan, that your area is gonna suffer damages. They, they set it. They knew it and made no conditions to take care of people, uh, who they planned to, uh, to damage. So that's a point of their suit is, you intentionally caused these people harm. Statute says you're supposed to have a way to take care of them for that.
Alright, great. Um, Joe, hop on up to the table here, sir, and you are next. First thing of, uh, is this your first, um, I, I apologize, Trevor, was this, is your fir, your first presentation this year, or did you present?
It is the first one this year.
Are you familiar with all the, the new legislators as well? Should we do a, I just wanna, you know, why don't we just, because this is your first one. I also want to introduce you and then if we could, just go around, we'll be very quick, especially if you have a couple of the, we, odd new legislator here. But I try to do the introductions at least once, so, if we couldn't actually, I see Kevin is new to that, that building as well for this meeting. So if you wouldn't mind, where, would you mind taking us off, introducing yourself?
Sure. Uh, I love his presentations. Maurice Hatt, legislator, nineteenth district.
Joe, why don't we do it? Go ahead, Dave.
Big Turner, director, and have, Hackley worked with Joe for many years, um, prior to his, uh, appointment as the director of Swigway Water. He's out there doing everything you can imagine, and if you call him and say, hey, I've got a tree that I'm concerned about. I have no idea, could have had one of these diseases. He finds the time to come to your house and, and tell you you're, you're good, or you're in trouble. Uh, I never heard of him turn anybody down. And we've got nine hundred and sixty-eight square miles in Swigway County.
We've been to most of them.
Hi, John.
What thing we thankful for about Joe?
Jefferson District three, Rich. Just starting to appreciate, see what he does, I appreciate it.
Yeah, impressed. And I'm, I'm sole chair of this committee and, uh, I, I will tell you that I've had many opportunities to talk to Joe about a lot of, it's some local questions and some county questions, very impressed with the work that he does, so, thank you.
Mel Chesbro, legislator, look forward to working with you, Joe.
Paul House, legislator, District eight. I've had no news since he's about four years old.
Morris Travella, District twenty-three. Uh, Joe, I've worked with him in the past. He's got a great staff out there, doing a great job.
Joe, Brad Jervell, uh, District seven. I'll be down to buy your leftover trees and trunks.
Richard Klein, District twelve. You've worked with my son and also myself a couple of times. I appreciate your office.
Mark Recro, District twenty-four. Forward to work with you.
Absolutely. Nice to meet you and, uh, well, thank you very much and, and thank you for all, all of your support. Certainly appreciate that. Um, and, uh, my name is, uh, Joe Charvalati, the district manager for the Swigway Water District. And, um, for about a, a, about ten years, I was the district forester there. And then recently, you know, and last, uh, three and a half years ago, stepped into this position as, as the manager. Uh, so as a result, diversified on a lot of different programs. Uh, but, uh, just like to give, um, and we, we do have, uh, it's a, a small staff that we have. We have a, a full-time staff of three. Uh, but we do increase in, uh, certain times of the year, primarily the summer. We had about ten interns last year. Um, and, and that's the way we, uh, you know, we, we get a lot of work done on the ground, so. Uh, but just like to give you a kind of a, uh, last year, end of the year update on some of the programs that I may not have reported on yet. Uh, the first one would be our Triple E program, and that was funded through a grant from Senator Ritchie that stemmed down through Ag and Markets, and it was for ninety-seven thousand dollars. Um, and it was actually a multi-county grant. It took care of, uh, some of the mosquito spraying that took place in Onondah County and Oswego County. Only a, you know, certainly a portion of it. Um, and it also was, uh, was utilized to purchase the dump kits that were handed out to the public actually in five counties. But certainly here, it went out to all of the towns, all the villages, cities, uh, any place that we could, we could, uh, get those disseminated. And also, they were, they were available at our office, so the majority of those that go out. And, um, I think that, uh, is able to get some control on the ground for, um, for that particular virus. We also had, um, a project, more of a stormwater management project. We worked with six villages in the county to plant seventy-two inch caliper trees, so very large trees. They, they were anywhere from probably five feet in height up to eight or almost ten feet, uh, really nice stocking. We got those planted around, uh, around the different villages in the county. Uh, each one of those got around anywhere from eleven to, uh, to thirteen or fourteen trees, depending upon how many sites that they had. And those were all villages that we've worked with in the past. We've done, uh, street tree inventory for them. And part of that was GPSing all the locations that you could plant or the vacant sites. And, um, we, uh, we do have certainly more sites out there, but we have a lot of declining populations in the villages. A lot of old sugar maples and, um, and, and things of that nature. So we're just assisting in getting diversity out there. We may have, build about ten different species. So, uh, we did, um, I think that, that project was not quite nice. We did also have, we, uh, as a county, the, the county has twen, about twenty-two hundred acres of reforestation property and the district manages those, everything from, um, the, the timber management aspect and its multiple use. So we obviously look at wildlife, water quality, aesthetics, and, and recreation as well. Um, so part of that is, uh, marketing a timber sale each year, and our, our timber sale last year was thirty-five acres. And we received, uh, eight, in a bid process, eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars from, uh, GNC Martin Logging. Uh, that went out in late December. Uh, we generally get maybe a little bit higher than that, but it really does depend on, on markets. It's really market-based and also, um, a lot of different factors playing that accessibility, length to the, uh, you know, skid to the wood itself, uh, and so forth. So with that said, that's, that's what we got. It was a, you know, certainly a fair price within our range of, of optimum pricing for that. Uh, and then this year, in regards to reforestation property, we're actually working on, um, a new design and perhaps, you know, we'll, we'll certainly start working with the county on that for a sign. Uh, maybe change the size up a little bit just for our, um, accessibility into, you know, remote places to be able to put these, these signs up. Where we certainly have had, um, you know, signage up, but a lot of those are coming down. We don't have any backstock on that. So I think it's time maybe to change that up. The design they had is, is, you know, certainly ancient old. So, uh, I think that would be a good time to present to the, to the legislature a new, uh, new design for that and look at some, uh, we're starting to look at some pricing on that as well. Uh, for this year, we have our tree program that, as you mentioned earlier. Uh, that's, uh, right now, we're taking orders until, uh, just about the, the middle of April and that's when actually the, the pickup will be as well. And we have about twenty-five species available. You can access that on our website, on swigwaysoilwater.com. And, um, certainly if the office call, we can send out a hard copy, mail it as well. And then, um, we have, uh, we're, our office is, is pretty heavy to invasive species. We do have, uh, quite a few programs coming up similar to last year, but right now we're in the planning phase of the water chestnut. Uh, we're, we'll have as far as the treatment control, we're actually down, last year we did a hundred and ten acres. And we're able to, and upon inspections last year, I was able to take some of that off. We added a little bit too, but I think it's averaged out to about eighty, a little over eighty-five acres and, uh, down, so down almost thirty, which is great.
And that's encouraging, right, Joe, because that shows that the efforts that you guys have been doing for the years has actually started to turn the tide a little bit. Is that a fair statement?
It is, yeah, absolutely. The, the idea, the intent is with that particular treatment is to get that knocked down to a certain density that you can hand pull it. There's other treatments. There's, you know, there's mechanical harvesting and that, that's a little, um, you know, tends to be a, a little more expensive. Uh, the, the hand pulling, you know, certainly effective, but it has to be a certain, certain density to be effective. If you have an acre of, you know, plants that look like this, um, it's, you know, that's tough. It's gonna take a, a crew of, you know, five, five to seven, about, you know, probably eight days of, of pulling. Um, otherwise, you can, you know, you can certainly treat that. It's probably a matter of, you know, uh, a matter of minutes or so. Um, so that's what we, when it's, you know, super dense, that's the route that we travel. And it has to be, um, you know, and unfortunately, it's not instantaneous and it's not even, one treatment won't do the trick. It's, it's generally, it's, you know, likely to be upwards of maybe, maybe four or five treatments. So, uh, one of the areas where actually I think we'll be on maybe our fifth year of it, um, several others are, I think, like in the three or four and, and a couple others will be in like, you know, the second, second year. So we're just, you know, looking at that. Hopefully that does reduce because obviously we've actually had our, our funding has reduced as well. So I think that's coinciding, uh, while I hope and, uh, we'll see, you know, see what, unfortunately, you don't, you don't really have, uh, you can see the impact in that particular year, but you really have to wait one full year, uh, one full, you know, into the next growing season to see what comes back. And, um, sometimes it just, it, it really, really works. I don't know, maybe it's the flow that has, you know, uh, has to do with a more, um, the high wa, you know, high water in the spring that can impact, uh, how high that, you know, the plants come, come up and things like that. So there's, um, many different factors involved in it. But it does look like, in, you know, certain areas, we're able to take, you know, re, reduce the acreage, uh, which is great, and then get the hand pulling in there. And that's the, the second phase of our treatment for our water, water chestnut, is we have a hand pulling program. In the past, we've hired about seven interns, so I think we'll, uh, be very similar this year, probably five to seven. And we've added a, um, a cutter that will, we'll have to purchase a boat, uh, get that on the back of it and it'll actually cut the weeds, uh, rather than, you know, Yankee each stem, you know, pull each stem. They can actually, uh, maybe, maybe do this in a little bit more, uh, heavier volume. So I'm hoping, last year they removed, uh, thirty-three thousand pounds out of the river and, and other, other sites. And, uh, certainly hoping to increase that this year with that, the new equipment. So we'll see how that works and can be a bit of an, yeah, an experimental year for it, but hopefully we're pretty operational by next.
Joey, uh, any legislators here would be interested to find out what areas you are treating or what areas you're pulling or if there's an area in their district that you're treating, what would be the best way to get that information?
Uh, if they contact me, I can, I can send them email, they have a map and, and they'll be able to see exactly where we're working.
Somebody working pretty actively in one of my favorite fishing holes at Rice Creek, Swigway House. So looking forward to some of the fishing population.
Absolutely. And that, and that's actually, that's seen, uh, you know, pretty good success as far as, um, it was almost to the, the bridge in a pretty dense fashion. And last year, we, we actually had to travel, you know, another maybe a hundred yards to actually get to where it was, it was done. So I think, um, seem to be, seem to be working there. Uh, we also have the Giant Hogweed program that's coming out. We have about sixty sites in the, in the, uh, in the county. And for those of you not familiar, that does cause, uh, the sap, if you get that on your skin, causes hypersensitivity to the sunlight. Causes some pretty severe burns if you're able to look that up. It's, uh, something you want to avoid. But we do, uh, we do have a treatment program for that and we'll have, like you said, about, it's usually about forty sites that actually get treated. But we have sixty that we monitor. And then over time, we've, um, you know, we've been able to take over a dozen sites off that list, but unfortunately, you know, some get added. So it's, um, it's something that I think it's, it's definitely the sites that we have are, are, you know, coming under control and a lot less plants over the, over the years.
Um, do you notify the landowners?
We do.
So that they're aware of what's on their land to be careful of?
Yeah, absolutely. So they, how, usually all it works is that it comes, uh, it's usually from a identification from the landowner that they have something. So, uh, there are a lot of lookout, look-alikes, so we do go and take a look, do a site visit, uh, maybe a pic, you know, they can get a photo to us, that's great. So they can call our office. A lot of them do call that. There's the Giant Hogweed line with the BEC. They've called that the past two, and that routes down to us. Uh, but if they call our office, we're happy to go look at it, look at a photo, however we need to work that. And then, uh, each year, we do notify them with at least a ladder that will be coming to, you know, to do this treatment. And they sign on for whatever level, you know, level, level of treatment that they're, uh, you know, they're interested in. Some go for a few years and then, you know, ask that we're, you know, that, that they'll, that they'll take it from there. And, you know, that's that we, uh, you know, are not, uh, not coming back. So however they would like to work it, but a, a lot of times, like I said, the landowners generally notify them.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, the third invasive species that will, Um, and then the, the third invasive species that we'll likely be working with this year is, uh, giant ghippie knotweed, which is everywhere in the county. This is a weed that, um, it's a lot of people call it bamboo. It grows a lot around a lot of, uh, old foundations and on a lot of stream sides. So when it does that, it outcompete some of the native vegetation that grow much taller. And it actually can impact the, the water quality and that, that impacts the temperature. So when it does that, you could maybe have a stream that used to support trail populations and maybe won't now. So that can be a, a big deal. It can also break off and cause, you know, cause some erosion. It does kind of hold a bank for a while, but it can also, it, it roots all together in a massive, uh, massive area. And it can, you know, even cause a little more erosion in some cases. So that's something that we'll do. We're hoping to do an inventory and this year, I don't know if it'll take, you know, two years, uh, look at some priority sites, maybe get some control on the ground in the next few years for that. So that's our, uh, that's our goal this year. And then we have two other projects. Uh, we certainly have, uh, you know, some of the other big projects we have planned are, you know, a lot of, in our, uh, educational programs. And only Erica will, Erica Schindriner will speak to those, as well as the agricultural programs. We have some, um, some best management practices that we'll be getting on the ground, at least a few farms this year, which is great. And then, uh, two other projects that we're excited about is a shoreline restoration project at Great Bear. We're actually working with Victor, as you mentioned earlier. And, um, trying to get that on the ground. We have, we have to work with several different agencies to get that in motion. Uh, we're in the permit phase right now, so whether that goes through this year or not, not, not positive. Um, but that is the goal. And then we're actually help, uh, we're assisting with designing, uh, getting a, a boardwalk and, um, uh, a part of a trail at Deer Creek Marsh Design. It'll be, uh, accessible, but also it'll allow traffic over the dunes to protect those as well as, um, maintenance equipment too. So right now, we're just, we're getting, we have a bid out to get that engineer and then hopefully get that on the ground, uh, this year.
Um, Joe, what, isn't it, uh, I believe it's called purple loose leaf? Isn't that an invasive thing that taken over cactails?
Purple loose stripe, that's, um, that's, it's more of a, a wetland plant. And it's not something that we deal with necessarily, but it can, um, you know, there's, there's some control methods out there. I think they actually have a beetle, uh, that can assist, assist with that, that control. It was a, you know, a really hot topic, you know, even ten year, you know, ten to twenty years ago. And it's, it's still out, you know, certainly out there invisible, but it's, it's, um, somewhat declined.
Okay, 'cause I know it's taking over cactails.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely. That is a, it's a major one for sure.
Joe, anything I'd like to add on?
Uh, we haven't, we, we were more heavily involved with them when they had some funding that routed through, uh, uh, through our office. And that's since they, they've used, you know, that portion of the funding up. And there hasn't, doesn't seem to be any, um, any hope or, you know, or at least there doesn't seem to be any talk of new funding for them. So, but as far as that committee themselves, the Reclamation Committee, they seem to be operating, they operated all last year, um, you know, on, um, a lot of volunteerism and, and donations and things of that nature. So they seem to be, you know, they're, they're definitely, they have a plan to continue. They have all the per- the, the major expenses, the equipment, and they have, obviously have all that, that purchased. Um, so they've been working on, uh, you know, on the Grand East side. And I believe they have every, every intention that do, do so this year. And they did ask us to, at some point in the spring, they'll have another reorgani- uh, a reorganization meeting with their committee. And so we do intend on.
We have to go there. And, and I think that somebody, you should definitely be involved with.
Okay, absolutely. I'm happy to help out anyway.
I'd be happy to bring on board.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Uh, Marie. Um, couple of questions.
Sure.
Billions of birds and bees lost, reported by Cornell. Are we encouraging bat boxes? Overspraying and the destruction of native wildflowers and species for them to feed from concerns me. Use of Roundup deeply concerns me. Um, I just wondered what we're, you know, what we're doing to support native insects critical for fish and bird populations. I mean, we know the bee populations, I called Cornell, they're saying that it burns out their navigation. So they can't find their way back to the hives, die from overexposure. Bees are, I guess, very susceptible to that. So what are we spraying with for mosquitoes? What is the name of the chemical?
Um, I'm not, we're, we're not involved in that aspect, though, but that would be the health, health department if they're more involved in that.
Are we putting out any bat boxes? Are we encouraging that?
Uh, yeah, we do, we do have those for sale, uh, as far as bat boxes. Um, that's.
Be a great project for schools, you know, for IA and everything.
We, we work in conjunction with City.
Four H, you're right.
Four H, those, those projects.
I was astonished at how many mosquitoes a bat will eat in one evening.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we do, we do work in conjunction with City to get those built. Uh, they have one of their construction classes that work on those for us. We get about fifty a year, I mean, they generate quite a lot.
Um, this is just a question for you. And does Crown Batch hold bags effectively? Is it safe and is it legal?
Um, I would, I'd have to look into that for you. I think that's becoming, it, there's a chance that's becoming, uh, invasive. But yeah, I think at one point it was heavily used. Um, I'm just, I'm not sure how, how much it is and now, it may still very well be, but I'd look at, if you don't mind, I'd look into that and go back with you.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks, Marie. Uh, Brad, you've got more.
Joe, where are we with, uh, Emerald Ashmore? Are we stable, is it increasing or decreasing?
No, it's definitely will be increasing. It's, it's in the county. It was found in two thousand seventeen in the Phoenix area as well as in Central Square. So you can, I've noticed that quite a bit, it's actually increased almost up to, from what I see, it's, it's kind of making its way up Route Six. And it's, it's pretty close to where it crosses Route Three. That's, it's not going to progress though, um, nice and steady like that. It will all of a sudden just jump and all of a sudden you'll find a population here. And in a few years, you'll probably be able to look and see a few spots where, where it's, where it is. And it very well could be, it's likely beyond that. What happens is the popul- you, um, you don't notice, you don't actually notice the buildup and explosion of it for about six to eight years. So they've done some studies on it. It was actually in this coun- country, it was found in the mid-nineties. And it was in the country prior, or actually, it might have been two thousand and two it was actually found. But it was found, uh, it was found to be in the country much, you know, um, a few years before that, like six or eight years. So it takes a while to notice that. Uh, it's, so very well could be beyond those, those borders. But it's, the way I see it, it's really on the, our southern border right now from, uh, Phoenix all the way over to the Central Square area. And, um, it will, it will definitely be a, you know, be an issue. I think it, it will be an issue for, you know, municipalities, high, you know, certainly highway. And, uh, because once those trees, trees die, ash comes down in large chunks. Um, it doesn't just, uh, you know, branch here and there. There'll be large pieces of the tree. And there, there's actually, there's a video online, you can see one. Um, it actually, that fell, I think, on a school bus, you know, caused more, I don't know if that caused any injuries, more of a, you know, scare, things like that. But it, it can definitely be a big deal on, you know, on highways and, and around, uh, infrastructure. So we do have, uh, we'll likely be able to get to, you know, maybe, maybe try to make at least a map of where you can see it. It's a little, it's, it's very easy at first to identify it. Um, I can probably, you know, see it on the highway at, you know, fif- you know, fifty something miles an hour. But there's a, there's a stage that, once it's been there for a year, the, um, what I look for is a little bit of, uh, some, underneath the ash bark, it's very gray. When they, uh, wood tuckers will flake that off, trying to get to the larva. When they do, there's a blonde color. So when you see that, it's pretty, it's, uh, it can be one of the diagnostic features to identify that you have it. It's not always, not a hundred percent for sure, but, um, it's, it's pretty easy to see that. And you can go up and see some other signs. And, and when you do, you definitely have that. But what happens is after a year or so of that, that turns gray and it's really tough to pick that out to, you know, really give the pinpoint on where it is, so.
So are we doing anything above besides identifying? I think during the city, they went out and actually probably color watched trees on there.
I, um, I, I have given some, you know, I, I have given some presentations, so I think I gave one of the infrastructure labs, maybe last spring. And I, I do recommend, you know, having more further discussion on it. It would be a, it'd be a great idea because, um, at least to start incorporating in those areas, I would say those are high priority. You're, you're definitely going to lose them. I think removal is, is would be a safety issue, uh, you know, if you, if you left them or just pruned them. You'll definitely be, and it may save some time and money because you'll actually be back. If you prune them now, you'll be back in a few years to cut, cut them down anyways. And then, um, you know, as long as you're there, you may wanna, may wanna look at that. So I'm happy to have more discussion on it. Um, but I think that some, you can, you can look at some models of other counties. Onondaga County does that, you'll, you'll notice in that area, you know, some trees with orange numbers on them. And that's a big, uh, a, a huge program they're working on to get those, uh, get those all caught. So they're, you're just getting ahead of the storm basically by, by working on that now. So, 'cause there's no telling once it's dead, when it will fall. It could be less than a year, it could be five years, but it's, there's a, there's a span there where it's definitely a danger.
Joe, you said that we're, we can have specimen trees injected.
You can, yeah, so it's, it's something on a, you know, wide scale basis, it's not, um, it's not really cost-effective. But you kind of, you have certain specimen trees, whether it's in a yard, a park, uh, near a library, something like that, absolutely. You can, um, there's some, um, you know, you can, there's some applicators out there and it's an injection. You do have to do it every three years. And it can, it can, you know, they, they do, the experts say that it, you know, can outweigh the cost of having it removed. Especially if, if the tree dies, there's a high, there's likely a higher cost of actually getting it removed. I'm sure, I'm sure it climbs quite steadily, so. Um, it can be, you know, something that you want to consider. There's, you know, some models, they say that you're, you know, the, the disease will incur, the insect will increase, population explosion. And then there's somewhere in there, there's a crash really when they kind of run out of food and that's supposedly that's, that's, uh.
Species of trees though.
Absolutely, and it, it'll be as bad as duckdell disease or chestnut blight, so. Um, you'll see some, some that you leave that, you know, that, that somehow this is not touched. And it, it'll be similar to how, just every once in a while, you see one that's there and healthy. And, um, I would imagine that's, that's pretty close to what it'll be. Because you can, you really, if you look at some, uh, photos of the Midwest or some information, you'll see how bad, how many, you know, billions of dollars have been poured into it already, come that way. So it is, it's definitely coming and increasing.
Thanks, Joe. Morse, did you have anything?
Yeah, I, I would like to bring everybody up to data, drones. Uh, we have a drone mani- uh, person in the mall in Fulton. And I happen to be a friend of his and he's developing the drones. And it's amazing what these things can do. I think the future is coming on board where you can take a tree, like she says, you want to spray just that tree? Fly my drone, or a drone over there, give it a blast. It has twenty-six gallon tank underneath, there's all kinds of things. So drone technology is coming on board. And if you go to the mall in Fulton, John McGraw is the owner. You want to talk to him, because they, they're doing a lot of this new technology and it's amazing. It really is amazing. That I think we can, you can take a neighborhood, for example, isolate it and spray it with a drone for mosquitoes. You know, there's all that technology coming on board. So I think we ought to, I suggest you as well as any of us, get more knowledgeable about it. So they can fly drones at the top of building, see a, a, a thing, a, a unit on top of building, air conditioning, take a sense of that.
That's great. Uh, Dave?
Joe, we can help with the sign design if you want, our graphics folks.
Oh, perfect, yes.
Say it to somebody, maybe.
Okay, that would be great. It's good, we appreciate it.
Great, all right. Any other questions for Joe?
Joe, thank you, it was very, very informational, appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Uh, Paul, do you want to give us a little?
Sure. So I originally came, uh, to talk about, um, the ag district. Uh, but the chairman has asked me to give a little, uh, update. And those of you that know me are very shy and reserved and have trouble talking about cooperative extension. So, uh, I'll take him up on his offer. Um, just for some of the new people, and, and I know you're very familiar with extension, but just as a, as a quick review. As the name implies, cooperative extension is, uh, local, state and federal governments cooperating to provide education directly to the people of a given geographic area. Um, it is an American invention. Uh, it is now all over the world, but it started here in America. Uh, cooperative extension in New York State, there is a cooperative extension office in every county of New York State. Um, and the amazing thing is that there is a cooperative extension office for every county of the United States that is responsible to take care of that population. Um, when you get out west and it gets, um, a little lightly populated, it might be one office responsible for five counties or something like that in a regional. Um, but, but every United States, uh, territory, every United, every state in the union has access to the information from cooperative extension. Our mission is to provide information directly to, excuse me, to the people, uh, of the territory that we serve. Um, the information must be based on, uh, research. Uh, we are reminded constantly that in cooperative extension, there are no opinions. Um, if we open our mouth, it has to be something that's based on research and we have to be able to prove that. Um, so just as a, as a little update, let you know what we're working on. Um, there's been some conversations around, uh, the county that have taken place, including one that took place at the last Farm Bureau meeting. Uh, there is a lot of confusion right now in the ag community about the new ag laws. Um, and what they, uh, what they mean, uh, depending upon the size of the ag producer. So we are in the process of putting together an education session. Um, it's shaping up to be something pretty big. Uh, we may end up opening it up to, um, to other counties. Um, but we're, we're planning right now to have a panel, um, of people that are going to come up and talk about what the new labor laws mean to agriculture producers. Um, soon as we have that all wrapped up, we certainly will let everybody know, excuse me, know about that. Um, so that, uh, those of you that are in agriculture, want to come and be part of that, you certainly can. Um, but that's in the process of taking place, uh, right now. We are making plans for County Government Day. Um, most of you have already been contacted, I believe everybody should have been contacted, um, to talk about your students. Um, we still have to work out, um, whether or not we are going to have the same people that are going to work on the, um, the question. As you did last year, I don't know if that's happening, but we have to talk with Terry Wilbur on that and see where that is. But, uh, County Government Day will be, uh, legislative session in May. Um, and so that's always a great time. We enjoy it, legislators enjoy it, uh, very popular, uh, popular thing to, to do. Um, also I want to let you know that, uh, we have had some interest in a program that we ran many, many years ago. Um, and there was a cost prohibitive factor that kept agriculture from getting involved in it. That has now been changed, uh, some of the laws have changed. Um, it's called the Purchase of Development Right Program. And it is, uh, a program that's put together by the state of New York to allow people that have land that they want to remain in agriculture. The state will come in through a grant, a competitive grant process, the state will come in and actually purchase those rights to development. So your land goes into a trust, um, and forevermore, that piece of property remains in agriculture. Uh, we have a handful of people that have expressed an interest, so we're going back to the drawing board to, to try to see if we can bring that forward. Um, and the only other issue that I want to let you know, and this is something that legislator Chesbourne and I have had many conversations about. Um, we, uh, are struggling with the new direction that the State Fair is taking in for four H. Um, you know, the, it's, and it's become an eighteen day fair. Um, and I, I can't even begin to tell you how many parents have told me that their kids are not going to go to the State Fair to represent Oswego County. Um, so I don't know if we're going to be able to rotate some of these people through. Um, it's, it is more applicable to the people that are showing animals, because nobody wants to have an animal down there that day. Um, it's a lot of stress on the animal, it's a lot of stress on the kid. Um, right now, they're telling us we're not allowed to rotate animals. If an animal goes in, the animal's got to stay. Um, so I, I, I don't know what, that's, that was the latest thing there. Uh, so I don't know what's going to happen. We certainly will keep you, uh, informed. Um, it's kind of a, 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 of a letdown for us, because Oswego County has always had, um, a huge presence at this, at the, uh, New York State Fair, huge. I mean, we've been in every single animal building there is. Um, and so we'll, we'll keep going, um, on that and see if we can't work something out. Um, and if you can keep me informed of what you hear, that would be absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, I want to talk to you about that.
Okay, all right, so. Um, but that's, that's a brief, so that's who we are and what we do to this point.
Do you have any question for Paul? David?
Uh, one other thing we talked about, Farm and Land Protection Board, is, uh, the, um, growing, uh, presence of solar installments on agricultural lands. And I think they're going to work on a kind of informative piece for, um, landowners to say, here's the things that you should be aware of. If someone talks to you about, what's on an installation on your property, just help protect the property owners a little bit more.
That's a great idea. Um, anything else for Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Gentlemen, if you would, uh, step forward to the big table here, um, I'll invite Gary Toth, uh, the chairman of the IDA Board. And Kevin Lamont Payne, the CFO, CFO of the IDA and chief, what's your title?
Business Finance Director.
Business Finance Director, Operations, Oswego County. Thank you, welcome, gentlemen. I think, Kevin, this is your first visit to the committee.
Yes.
So if you wanna introduce yourself.
Sure, well, I guess I what just was, but I work on staff of Operations Swigah County and serve as the Chief Financial Officer of the County of Swigah IDA.
I think everybody, I think everybody knows Gary, but Gary, why don't you ask a quick?
Gary, the chairman of the IDA, resident in Mexico.
Great, well, we had, we had scheduled for a little update on, on that. It's not yet, my understanding is not cleared with the state, so we're gonna kind of hold off on that update at this point, is that correct? And we'll, we'll catch up next month on that.
Yeah, I could give a couple of sentences on it. We're, we're entertaining the concept, working with Empire State Development to potentially, I think, think on the line on that, create a loan fund that would be available to businesses or recipients of their R E D I money, grant money. Be with, our proposal is to have money from the IDA flow into a loan fund administered by Operations Swigah County. And by reduce or eliminating our upfront fees and giving some interest free periods, we would be able to satisfy the local match for those that are required by the grant account, the state grant program. Grant up fifty percent or up to two hundred thousand dollars. It's actually not fifty percent because they require five percent of the match. So the, the state money is a forty-five percent grant. So we're hopeful that the state will approve this. It's a little bit of a crib, but they didn't really expect this type of response. So it's, it's in a legal, under legal approval by Empire State Development. As of last night, I don't, I have a update that they don't have an update, so. So more to come.
That's great, and it's exciting that, you know, we always talk about the government working outside the box. It's one of the new ways to do the things to help the folks who are paying the taxes. To have a, a problem, a project like this could be really, you know, really a huge to those folk. We've talked a number of times how some of them, the way it was set up, it just doesn't make sense to them.
Yeah, state money comes in after the project's completed, so they need the money upfront to complete the project. And hopefully our, our loan program is, our proposal is approved and give them the money, loan them the money to assist in completing the project, but still have to come up with the other fifty percent. And then our loan would stay in place for a number of years. So once they receive the state money, they could do to pay us off or use that, that money that comes in from the state for the working capital that needs the business.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna thank Dave Turner for bringing that to our attention. It wasn't something we originally came up with, it was an idea that had been discussed. But Dave talks of specifics from other areas that were looking into it. So we researched it also, and that's how we got to this point. And this just goes further as far as I'm concerned on the cooperation, collaboration that, you know, the economic development agencies of Swigah County is trying to work with the county to make things better for all residents.
That's great, and also to highlight another point, we, David brought up that there is a bid out right now for the sewer project out at the airport. That was also a shared study that was done between the IDA and the county as well. So just kind of trying to highlight some of the opportunities we've had to coordinate.
Not just a study, but they actually made a contribution, cash contribution towards our actually.
Did you have any other updates, anything else you wanted to bring forward?
There's no other, we, at the last meeting, I was present, but we updated that product term with any projects that we've approved. We'll have some updates, I believe, at the next, at the next session.
Did you wanna speak at all to Dave's point of, I guess, put it cordial, the idea of these landowners and the solar arrays and solar farms? I know the IDA has been really dealing with quite a bit of that as far as the, the tax treatment of it. And I don't know if there's anything you wanted to kind of say about that. It's, we're starting to see that spreading out throughout the county as a rural county. This is something we're interested in, so.
No, we could talk about it. Kevin's got a few more of the details. Kevin and I talked about this at length, because Kevin, you know, we, we have a lot, two or three projects in the pipeline right now. And what they're, they're asked for a pilot is all over the place, you know. Time, you know, duration of the pilot, the amounts. And, you know, maybe some want an escalator, some don't, and the property size of the project. So we, Kevin did a very good job putting together a summary of all the projects that we have worked on and we have formalized as far as pilots and stuff. In the recent, most recent one, we did up in Albion for abundant solar. We kind of used that as a basis, because we wanna be consistent. If a project comes in here, we want to have, give them the information, say, this is, you know, our program, you know, for solar farms. So we're not, you know, trying to show, not, I wanna say favor system, but one gets a better deal than the other. So if we have a consistent program that they see right up front. And the ones that did have varying degrees of, of ass, looked at what we proposed and they're in favor of it, they think it's a great idea. So right now, it's, hasn't been formalized yet. We hope to vote on it at the next meeting in March. And that way, it's gonna be a program that we're gonna be moving forward with. It also, also addresses decommissioning. Because we figured that was a big part of these programs. We didn't want to leave, you know, we didn't want these companies leaving a community and just leaving a ground with solar panels and everything else there. We wanted to make sure that part of their long-term plans were there for twenty, forty, whatever years, decommissioning is a part of that plan.
That's great. Also, as a quick reminder, the monthly IDA meetings are televised now, so you can find that link on the website as well. And so if you have any questions after viewing them, or they are also open to public participation. So anyone who's interested can, can attend as well.
Next one is March twenty-fifth at nine AM.
Anything else that you wanna say? Does anybody have any questions that you saw? Brad.
I sent a comment, and that is, I'm thrilled right now to hear you say that decommissioning is part of the plan. This is the first time I have ever heard anyone mention decommissioning when we use that false term of renewable. Because these, these things that we claim are renewable, energy resources are not renewable. They're used and then thrown away, so I'm thrilled to hear you guys talk about decommissioning. Thrilled to, so that's, who goes on that?
Another thing too, that we have put as part of our program, some of the, the ass, the solar farms projects that are being proposed, they might have a one hundred, you know, just using an example, one hundred acre parcel of land, maybe thirty of it or twenty-five that's being used for the actual solar farm. So part of our, you know, our, our long-term standard is to make sure that the solar farm is only part of the pilot program, you know, the actual property is part of the pilot program. The rest of the property is gonna be, you know, assessed as the community determines.
We either, we either through a subdivision or working with the assessor to prorate the remaining parcel and/or any improvements that might be on that remaining parcel, we're sure it's taxed at the current tax rate, so.
That's great.
That's the most, most appropriate way to go. And Brad, in addition to the plan where we will require that a bond, a decommissioning bond be in place.
This is, this is absolutely random, I've never heard of a renewable slash not really renewable project ever discussing it. What do we do with lithium batteries? You know, it's worse than nuclear waste. What do we do with broken solar panels? Solar panels don't last forever and they don't get renewed, they get thrown away. So, you know, so, so I'm thrilled to hear it, good.
What do we do with the concrete base that attaches?
I mean, concrete can be ground and repurposed, that, that would be part of the plan. David, of course, that would be removed as part of the decommissioning plan. Much like a mining permit or some other kinds of permits, the property would be restored to. Uh, it depends on how the panels are mounted. Sometimes they're mounted on the large heavy, depends on what the subsoil is. They're sometimes almost set on the surface on heavy concrete pads or anchors. Other times they're more drilled into the ground, which uses less concrete. And then if there are any battery storage facilities or just the pads for the transformer or the inverters and other things on site, those are on concrete pads. So that can, concrete can be ground up and rebar can be pulled out and repurposed for fill and other, other uses in construction.
I get more some data.
Kevin, can we have an update on our Nestle site?
Yes, so the, as you probably know, the IDA is working, we're in a design phase and budgeting phase now to construct the building at the manufacturing building at the Nestle site. This is much like projects we've done in the past at other locations, including similar or Operations Swigah County's industrial parks, where we build a building to meet general manufacturing specifications. We know from working in the field that there is a severe lack of buildings in a twenty, thirty, thirty-five thousand square foot size that are appropriate for manufacturers that don't come with a range of issues like decades or a century of deferred maintenance, environmental issues, asbestos, other things. So we have a purchase offer that's been accepted by the city for the location of the Nestle site. It's on the back of the site, and we are working through our site plan approval process with the city. And we are in the running at the moment for the downtown revitalization initiative with the city of Fulton. And we, in last year's round of the Empire State Development CFA, we received an award for some of the funding there too. So we're trying to piece together some funding from other sources, some of the IDA's money, and then the potential we would finance that we may piece from other local banks. We've been talking to, I can't discuss the particulars, but we've been talking to interested tenants as well. And there are, there is some interest of either companies that are already in the city of Fulton that are looking to expand or, or kind of offshoot companies from other, other manufacturers in the area. And a couple of exciting projects that have some interest in either hundred percent of that building or kind of half split into two, so we've got two different companies in there. And then eventually, perhaps after about five years, some of the grants require that we own the building for five years. Then we may look at the idea of selling it to, to the tenant if that was an appropriate move at that time. And then perhaps use the money to do another, to do another building. The property would be what was done in the past with these, for IDA or, or Operations Swigah County, build these facilities. It would be a pilot, most likely it hasn't been approved or even applied for yet. But the IDA would put a pilot payment, a pilot agreement in place so that the IDA would pay a percentage of its rents to the taxing authorities as a typical, as a typical pilot. So we're, we're enthused by that project. I went to a meeting last night in Fulton for the D R I. And the local, the local planning committee there actually slightly increased the amount of our, without us requesting it, slightly increased the amount of our ass in there. And there was the projects up to, up to a full twenty percent, we were about eighteen point five percent prior to that. So I was encouraged by that. It shows, shows me that we have some local support in the city of Fulton, great project, so.
I just wanna bring up the point, the spectrum has taken over the parking lot in the Nestle site. It's build a building and they're functioning there. So spectrum has a, on that corner lot, a building going up right now.
And we've been involved, just to talk, put a little color to that. I've been, I've personally been involved with that developer for quite some time in his planning and working on the site location and then choosing and building that building. And, and they've done, they've constructed that building without any IDA support. They did receive a modest award from the state CFA process last year, which they're looking at, they're steps through that now to. They evaluated our, the pilot program, evaluated some of our other programs and chose to do it without, without our public support. At least in the county, they do have some state support.
That's great, David, you have?
Just to follow on that, the next and final public meeting for Fulton D R I is March nineteenth. At that time, a final list will be proposed to the state. And while there's nine point seven million dollars available to the city of Fulton for their plan, the city will submit about fourteen million dollars of the projects. And the final decision for those gets made at the state level. So community has a very aggressive planning process, but they don't get the final say on who is selected. So that project is still on the list. We're hoping that the state will approve it when it gets there, but there's no way that we can guarantee that. A lot of good projects.
I think Jerry was.
I was just gonna make another comment, condition, Kevin, last week, we met with the, the new administration of Fulton. There were some new councilors, obviously, then the mayor, Dina Michaels, and some of the city officials, because they had questions on the project. And they were very good questions, and, you know, there was a couple of members of the staff with us. And we answered their questions and, and I thought it was a very good meeting. So we just wanted to make sure that they were comfortable. They answered some suggestions for us as far as roads and things like that that we, we looked at and we brought, we're gonna bring back to maybe re-figure. But I thought it was a very good meeting and, you know, we just wanted to make sure they were comfortable with everything we were doing.
I've noticed that there's a couple actual building sites going on in the Village of Phoenix, and I didn't know if you were involved in that at all, or is that just they haven't approached you?
Village of Phoenix right now, it's a slogan project.
Yeah.
We're not involved with that.
Just, okay, because I know they've got one almost complete while they're building it actively. And I know that there's another one that they're, a site development, and I thought it's big enough that.
There is a site, yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that project.
All right, well, then let me just take that.
And just as a reminder, any, any project that is going through the IDA or, I guess, the IDA, you will be getting as a legislator, an update of any public informational meetings or anything like that.
Yeah.
So just kind of keep us, keep us in the loop as well of what's going on in our areas.
And if, and if you have a project in your area that, in your district that you think we may be able to assist in some way, please make an introduction, we're happy to visit, visit with you or separately, if you can come up to our office, I'll go down there, talk about the different programs that we have that may be able to help some of these businesses grow and hopefully hire more people, which is the objective, so.
I know that we always, we get that, that notification, that packet that we usually get, but it's always like three months behind. So I didn't know if there was something else going on that we.
Now, at the moment, we're not, we're not involved.
Before, but before we do any action or take any action, we send notices out for public hearings to the taxing authorities, you know, the county, the school district and whichever municipality it's located in. So we give them advanced notice so they can come, share their interests either verbally at the meeting or written comments we take too, so.
And we've started, as Tim's alluding to, started to copy the appropriate county legislature.
That's what I was gonna say, the appropriate, okay.
But again, of course, by the time the public hearing is being held, it's, you know, somewhat late in the game of our involvement with the project. We may have been involved for a year.
Right, but at least we're some while included in something we.
Yeah, so if not by then, at least you'll have a copy of the public hearing notice here, my luck's here.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, maybe, maybe we should go to, since paper's been eliminated, to the website. The county has a website and maybe some of our stuff could be sent in or could be arranged or nothing.
I mean, I haven't looked into that. We, the IDA has our legal obligations to mail some of these things, we certified. As far as I understand, that's based on some New York State guidelines for IDAs. So we, we mail the notices to the, to the required people and then that's where the, the concept of adding the.
I'm not suggesting we do something illegal, but I'm talking to include in our website the possibility of a project's been completed or whatever in the website, because that's what we're going by now.
And also as a quick reminder, we do have two county legislators on the IDA Board. So there's, obviously, if another legislator gives me a question, you can always reach out to one of those two, myself and Mark, so. All right, if there's anything else, thank you, that's a wonderful update, appreciate the work you've done. Is there any other questions? If not, I'll look for the motion. All right, now make the motion, is that, is that it, Paul? All clear? I think it was wonderful, we are returned, thank.